Hi Javier. Can you hear me?
He was, he was emailing me from, I guess he was in the airport in Phoenix.
Must be nice and warm over there.
Yeah, I'm in, um, I'm in San Diego now, but it's pretty chilly.
Are you the one who inspired where is Waldo?
Not quite, but uh, I'm surprised how cold it is here on the west coast.
Is it down to like sixty-nine or something like that?
At night it gets down around forty-five or maybe fifty, so it's pretty chilly.
I was just working with a principal from San Diego today.
It's a nice place.
It is a nice place. How long are you there?
Just until Thursday, then I fly back to our neck of the woods in Maryland, Virginia, flying to Salisbury, Maryland, that's close to where I live now. Is there a lot of background noise where that you can hear on the, on the zoom?
No, not at all. We hear you great.
Okay, I'm kind of next to a lobby at a hotel, um, so that's good to know. Thank you.
I mean, skinny right now, we're saying.
I'm sorry?
The same.
Yeah, I mean Javier, you do a good job of keeping track for us of what is missing, so I'd be surprised if you missed what we were missing September.
We can check tomorrow if we have assigned coffee, because we would have signed it after that October seventh meeting. I would just keep it off the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, good idea. Thank you. All right, um, is Molly coming back up soon?
She was trying to find her phone on it.
I think that's her. What? I had to.
All right, let's call the meetings order at seven oh three.
I do local.
Please.
Please Molly.
Here.
Uh, Lisa, I'll be out.
Here.
Dan Grisco.
Here.
Josh Beck here and Shannon Strasman.
Here. Okay, so. Can we agree to the agenda? I request that we hold off on September minutes. Javier is gonna look and see if he has a science copy in, in, um, in the back.
So it was done?
Yeah, it looks like it was done.
Looks similar to October seventh.
Did you do that in September?
Yes.
Did you, do you remember that meeting when doing those minutes? Because we have an email.
October is already over there. Yeah, I mean, we went over that, but aren't we looking at September minutes right up here?
Well, yes, we are, and that's my question, I'm not sure why, because I believe we've already approved.
Oh, I see, I thought.
And I believe you were missing.
The one who wrote that.
Well, he, he needs to keep a science copy once, once it's been voted on by the planning commission, he keeps a science copy in the back. Um, so the question is whether he has a science copy or not, but we do believe that we approved the minutes on, in our October meeting.
You had drawn them up.
I mean, it's gonna look slightly different from this, but let's all go back to our emails and, and double check. But it looks like we're missing November, December, January. Is there a plan for catching up before we fall further behind?
Yeah, so we're catching up on town council meeting, so we'll loop back my planning commission. Uh, it's kind of pull from one bucket and then fill up other bucket same time.
Well, I, I remember last year. The issue was budget, so you guys are gonna start working on the budget now, and that only means you're gonna start getting busier, so the last thing I'd like is for you guys to get rid of the hind.
Yeah, so if, if I'm saying picture, we're picking up one of the minutes this month, just to kind of stop that, because I'm already working on the budget today. Uh, to, to your point, um, and then we'll try to use the next month. Hopefully, if it's a smoother budget process this year. The one thing is much of an administrative burden as last year.
Yeah, I mean, I would absolutely love to step up and help out, but I have two jobs right now. I am. Working with scan planning commission, um, I can't, I just, I just am late, not even keeping up with my commitments as it is. Um, all right, we'll just, maybe Molly will save us again. Thanks Molly.
Uh, minutes that were sent.
Yeah, there's no.
It's, yeah.
Okay, so ten seven, there was so something. If you guys could get that one signed. I mean, that's good enough, right? I mean.
Cause it should be, I'll just check October.
Or just get the original that I sent, or whatever you all made it to be, and. Okay.
I'll check the record.
Well, that was a waste of time, but.
Yeah, sorry Molly.
Don't be sorry.
Well, we appreciate your work in getting that done.
I pulled the book out, sorry, I'll put it back.
On the record.
I thought he's tweaking here. Trying to.
So otherwise, can we agree to the agenda?
Um, to, it turns to the agenda second.
All right.
You gentlemen are not gonna let us second anything, are you?
Oh, I, I got you, and the next one is it's all yours.
No, I really love the patents that you put out there, you know, it's just right on.
I'm teasing you, Josh. Dan?
Update on the town council. Last month, we had our first official meeting of the new council, two new council members. Eddie also. Coming back on a new spot, so, and he was elected the vice mayor again, he'll continue in that role. It was an organizational meeting, although we're gonna do more organization coming up.
I wanna ask again, how come you all did a vote on vice mayor?
The, you mean, why did we, why did we vote for it? There's not an official, officially, there's not.
It's been like that for years, I just was curious why you decided to do it that way this year.
That's what they wanted to do.
Who's they?
But they, like, everybody in the council.
The collective they.
The collective, all of it.
Ominous, right?
All of the testosterone, you know?
That is true that sadly, there are no women in the council.
I know, it's not very representative, is it?
We've had as high as three women on the council, but.
That's amazing.
At the moment, at any rate, so he was reelected as the, or rechosen as the mayor, I'm sorry, vice mayor. And we are gonna get into committee assignments next. Or this, this month, we'll get into committee assignments. We talked about. Several different, uh, we appointed two people to the zoning appeals board, Stuart Munson and Stephen Meeks also had.
Oh, you're kidding? Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were appointed. And we kept our meetings the same time we approved an easement for the Alamo County Service Authority. We approved a couple of policy things related to. Appointments and resignations and also related to nonprofits, oh, and. I think that was the main, did I miss anything?
Now, this upcoming month, we'll do budget, so I should present it to council on a, a draft budget in February, just to stay on schedule. Uh, tomorrow here, uh, Elwell County, uh, no, Elwell Charlotte Historical Society is doing like an information session. Around the closing of Hatton Ferry, they had like an article in the weekend, and progress, so just right here at five P M. Is anybody wants to?
Which day was that?
Uh, tomorrow, which is the fourth.
Okay.
Five P M. Just general information on the closing, but we wanted to provide a form for people to kind of. Hear what my feedbacks to kind of use the site still for historical and answer any questions.
That's interesting, I was just at. The Appomattox National Park, Longwood University, they do this event each year, the first time I went to it, this, this Saturday. It's about Appomattox and a bunch of authors and history people, but they have a. Nonprofit that supports a lot of stuff over there, also that buys land and does things, and it was interesting to think about that in the context of this, because. If Scottsville were. To be more aggressive, we would need an organization like that to support, you know, they would come in and buy or support. Something like Hatton Ferry, but we don't have that.
No, it's like, if the article I put in on the website, uh, our calendar, seems to be like most significant financial burden, or. Financial impact, I'll put it that way, um, it seemed like it didn't come easy, because they've been talking to us for a while about it in the background.
Absolutely.
It's kind of slowly. Reached this disappointing conclusion for a lot of people.
Well, it may be too, why they've all died across the country, so to speak, which is difficult, we don't want it to die, but it's.
What kind of upkeep would there be? Is it one of those barges on the wire?
Yeah, it's like, uh.
I mean, you push down around the pole.
Uh, I think it killed because of water levels last year.
Oh.
It was so low.
And it just scraped the.
Yeah. I walked the boat two weeks ago, and it looked like it needed lots of upkeep.
Yeah, like the article said, maybe fifty thousand like deferred maintenance, so.
Every year?
Uh, now just said like deferred maintenance in total, so maybe that's kind of holding off, and then.
Yeah.
Bill gets higher and higher.
That's too bad. So that's tomorrow, what, what time?
Five P M at Victory Hall.
Five P M early, okay. All right, thank you. Let me ask, um, really quick, Meeks and Munson were appointed as what?
They were recommended for appointment.
Zoning industry.
To be technical, the judge has to. Okay, they, so we made suggestions, there's a little bit of a. There had been a gap for a while and those spots being filled, Zach Bullock had also had interest before, he was frustrated with the process, and then. In the end, we appointed those two.
Okay, but I'm just taking.
I'm saying we recommended those two.
We, as in the council voted?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as, as zoning administrators?
Their Board of Zoning Appeal. It's a, if.
The B Z A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a rarely used function, but it does happen sometimes.
It's in the event that a zoning request gets denied, there's an appeal body, and so that's the appeal body. Right, I'm just taking notes for the minutes, awesome.
Oh, she's a savior. Raise your sword.
And then I had a question about the easement for Alamo County Service Authority, I think that's.
Yes.
Something that's worth, worth hearing more about.
So you might have heard last fall, we're looking at a phase four, so face Alamo County Service Authority. Authority is doing a phase four pipeline upgrade, or water line upgrade for town Scottsville, so they did a presentation maybe September, October. Uh, for town council, essentially what they're doing is they're upgrading pipes from the facility off of James River Road down Warren and down Main. For portion, and then cutting over to West Main.
Oh, I thought it was gonna go through hardware, it's not.
Um, small chunk will go up, uh, Morse Hill also, it's like a kind of fan that way.
Oh, that's.
So the easements are for new pipes?
So, yeah, so essentially the easement is from Page Street across towards Ferry. So essentially going through that parking lot south of the tennis courts, and they'll just redo the, uh, pipe there. Um, that just happens to be a property of the own.
This is the water?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're probably working with other local residents on easements, they need on their own parcels, but that was the one piece, because Dorian Park is town property but maintained by. Uh, Alamo County, so at the end, we have to, or town council would have to approve an easement.
Do the residents up on Morse Hill own the street, or is it, uh, maintained?
Private streets, so they've even spoken with them about easement staying up there. So, uh, I even think like a resident attended that public hearing and was appreciative of the information they were given.
Yeah.
Um, that was slated for next year, it might take longer than that.
Wow.
Um, just.
I, I always wonder, you know, what are you guys doing over there? I know there's a lot to do.
Um, and then maybe the year and a half, just check in, um, they usually do like a blog, they did that with Crowdsaying when they did their upgrades. So they'd kind of keep some kind of open communication on people.
It's a huge project.
Yeah, it's millions of dollars, it's, uh, again.
Digging and.
And just modernizing even more the water system down.
Well, that's good.
Good for us.
Yeah.
Well, not three, but.
No, no, you'll be able to get the water you pay for.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, any matters from the, the public?
No one in attendance said that.
No one is, not even Nancy, like, what's going on?
Usually not, but it's just like it does.
Okay, new business?
None, no.
Okay, old business, Complan Lincoln?
Okay, well, glad to join everyone from San Diego, still light out here. Um, I have a few slides prepared, um. Basically, to give a brief overview, I, I met with, uh, Molly, um. Let's see, it was about four or five days ago, Molly, right? And, uh, we talked through a lot of, a lot of points, uh, just fine tuning some ideas, uh, in my mind anyway, it really helped, so thanks so much, Molly.
I think you talked for almost three hours.
Yeah, two, two hours, forty minutes, yeah. Um, and then I, I emailed Dan, uh, for some feedback on River Connection, so I'll share some slides, and thank you so much, Dan, for your. Your response, so glad to talk more about that too, um. So let me just share my, my screen if I may, Javier, it looks like it can, okay? Okay, I'll just go to full screen here. Okay, so, uh, one point that Molly raised, um, and it kind of made me realize we, we hadn't really tackled this maybe as much as we should in the Complan. Yet, um, this connection between environmental stewardship and community connections, um. So it's, it's this first bullet point, significantly improved connections between downtown and the James River. So, um, as we have it written now in the document, it said, you know, continue these efforts. And also take note of this potential connection from the Route twenty bridge to the levee. Uh, but that got me thinking that. That doesn't necessarily get us all the way to the river, it gets us from the highway to the levee a little bit better, um. But doesn't get us past the, the train tracks, um. So this is just a visual, uh, aerial photo of, uh. Two possible areas, and we, we know, uh, the town has been discussing the Route twenty bridge connection to the levee for a long time. Then, um, Ferry Street, I took another look there. Uh, Molly and I were, you know, talking about the different land parcels along the river, and, and we know that. The town doesn't really own any land directly next to the river. Um, so this is just a map of those, those parcels, okay? And, and one point was, you know, we're just revisiting the tire factory, it's actually quite a distance from the river, as you can see there on the, the map. Okay, so, um, this is what I, I think we know right now, um, some of the considerations of creating a connection, and, and jump in here if there's more to add. Uh, Scottsville as a town does not own any land adjacent to the James River, the D W R boat ramp is only public land there. Uh, the railroad tracks are the main barrier to the river, and then connecting to the Route twenty bridge to the levee walk. You know, doesn't really increase the pedestrian connectivity across the, the railroad tracks. But being on the levee walk, uh, you know, it is a nice view, um, and I think it's very valuable to the town, and it's right next to the, uh. You know, the Batel boats there, uh, and, um. You know, and near Main Street, so I think there's a lot of value there, but could be also valuable crossing those, those, those tracks. Um, and then, you know, creating a, a truly singular pedestrian bridge across those tracks would be extremely expensive, it seems, and there'd be a lot of. Regulations flying over the, the railroad tracks, you know, and then we got thinking, uh, when Molly and I were talking, is there an at-grade crossing possible? So, um, I took a look at Ferry Street once again, and I'm sure you're all very familiar with this area, it's just not very hospitable to walk. Walk through, right, um. Looking from the riverside across the tracks towards, uh, James River, uh, Reeling Rafting, you've got the, uh, the levee there. Um, and then even that James River Reeling Rafting parking lot, and then the Goco. I guess itself, and then the parking lot behind that, it's just not very hospitable. Um, and then just, this is a photo I took from a Google Street View, um, you know, if you're wanting to walk from near the Goco. Around this corner, the Goco itself doesn't really have any sidewalks, you're kind of walking in this weird concrete area. Then, once you get to this Ferry Street, there's also not a sidewalk there either. So what I, I did see is, you know, the levee walk is already there on top of the levee, and there's a potential to, to kind of. Go down this existing path, I would call it. Uh, near those school buses where the, the red arrow kind of turns southward. So. Mind the, the school bus, it was just here when Google drove by and took its, its photographs of the streetscape, but. You can see that levee walk, and maybe many of you have already taken this, this, this walk here down this little path that's kind of created there. And it seems to me that going around this, this pump house could have a real potential to create some, some pedestrian connection to the river. That could be, you know, strengthened with a better pavement, uh, some, you know, bright colors on the pavement, for instance, um.
Yeah.
And just some, you know, cleaning up the gravel and the weeds. I don't know, I, I, this is a, a screenshot from the Alamo County G I S program. And you can see these, these landlots don't really exactly tie into the physical infrastructure, for instance, I would assume the. The Goco doesn't really own the, the land that the pump house is on, but, uh, maybe there's a little bit of area there that the town owns. Or there's an easement or something that maybe we wouldn't even have to worry about any, uh, land alienation and such. To create this connection in the longer term, at least recommend it in a schematic level.
So you couldn't tell from the G I S who owns that little dirt pile?
Uh, no, this is all that, that, uh. One can see, so you can see there's a property boundary here.
Mm-hmm.
And it kind of comes over here to a triangle that's almost. Somewhat in the street, it seems, which is probably not the case, you know, surveys are not. Exactly accurate at, at this scale, um. You'd have to go back to the original documents, but, uh, basically, this pathway, it already kind of. Comes down here, and then people have been walking this way for a long time, it seems, just not really a formal pathway, yeah.
Lincoln, one thing I was gonna mention to you about. The connection that your suggestion, or you're suggesting is that if you go back. Maybe ten or twelve years ago, we had some U V A students do some sketches of what they could do to get us to the river. Things like putting a tunnel under the railroad tracks, which would be counterproductive to the levy, but, uh.
Yeah.
Or a bridge, or a lot of different things, but. Once, that, one thing I will say about when you noted, and it goes to what I emailed you back, is that if you think about. The idea of trails and trying to get people away from roads. This has the advantage of, of doing that, like the Beltline Trail in Atlanta, and you're trying to get people away from the road, so. The idea of getting on them on the levee, I hadn't thought of it that way before, especially if we added the connection coming off the bridge. So just so you all know, that's something we've, there was a point where we were fairly actively talking about it. Maybe ten or twelve years ago, and then kind of warming up to it again, a, a stare that would go off the bridge and connect. To the top of the levee, but it would add to this connection, because what it would do would be a, give people a walkway. To come from the main part of town, hit the bridge, and then they'd be, be down on the levee, and it also. Uh, one thing I was saying to Lincoln is, the bridge is probably the most underutilized infrastructure we have here. It's actually really pretty out there, if you go there, sunrise, sunset, seeing it's the most underutilized space. We also had talked about years ago. Dreamed about maybe even tying into a park that maybe came into existence in Buckingham, on the other side of the. Dreamed about maybe even tying into a park that maybe came into existence in Buckingham, on the other side of the. Of the James and using that walkway, because that's that really nice walkway there, not being used, though at any rate.
Is it wide enough? I mean, do you feel comfortable up there, or do you feel a little bit like, whoa?
It feels pretty safe, I mean.
For the sidewalk?
Yeah, I don't remember. I've been up like once or twice.
To put it in perspective, Josh's five thousand dollar study, when the sidewalk came up with twenty, would have been nowhere near as wide as that is up there.
Yeah, oh, okay, cool.
It's not to say it's, I mean, it'd be better if it's wider, but it's wide enough. It's a safe, what is it, maybe four feet or something?
You can comfortably fit two wheelchairs that to be.
That's great, that's great, yeah. I, um. I'm not very strong on my feet these days, um, and it's really. It is difficult down there because there's so many places to trip and fall and go into a, you know. Um, whatever you want to call it, like a little dip or whatever, and so it is kind of. It would be really nice to have. Some sort of sidewalk or some sort of way to get down there where you don't feel like, oh, God, I'm gonna fall.
Yeah. No, that's, and and Lincoln, the other thing I would say, that's a really good point, is when we were. In the first five or six years of all the stuff we did. With the Van Cleef Nature Area, the whole idea was kind of, since we can't get to the river, let's get to the lake. And the eighty-five thousand dollar grant that opened up the main walkway that comes in from Doug's Maytag and going up the hills. That that enabled that to happen, and there are ways in the future, even if we will struggle with. The access to the river that we can improve what we do at Scottsville Lake. One of them, Molly, is there are several projects, we've talked several times about how do we. Go further to make more aspects of Scottsville Lake and Van Cleef Nature Area. More accessible to people with this build. I'm not involved with it at the moment, but when we were, or when I was, that was a, and so it's something to. That I think we could look at again as a town to do more to make things accessible there.
Well, I have to give you props that, um. That dock is really nice, and the kids really love it, and it's a way to kind of get out in the middle of it. That's really great. So the the little pathway down to it would be so much nicer if it wasn't kind of. Uh, water.
You you know, you know something, and and it's worth, maybe it's worth applying a commission hearing this, because sometimes. Sometimes it it's to know the story a little bit helps to know, so when kind of on a whim. I emailed the Department of Wildlife Resources and I said, hey, would you be interested in stocking Scottsville Lake with trout? And started this, they looked at, again.
Are they still doing that?
Oh, yeah, they stock it eight times a year.
Eight times.
So, so when they started, they came, they they shocked the fish, they did all kind of stuff. Eventually, they started putting the fish in there. And as we cited it out and looked at it over several years, they had the idea of a dock. And we, they had gotten to a point. A number of years ago where they were, there was one year that they had the money they were gonna give us, I think it was seventeen thousand dollars for a dock. Everything was there, except they had changed their procedures where they had to have another agency. In the state review it, and it was like double the price, and they couldn't give us the money. Long story, but in fact, our Barry Grove, who was the former mayor.
Yeah.
Had worked with me, created the document, because we have, we had to have twenty-five year lease with the with them anyways. What, so nothing happened for three or four years, and then out of the blue, through an un-unexpected. They said, okay, here's fifty thousand dollars for a dock, and that was under max tenure. Un-unfortunately, at the time, docks were about twice as expensive at the time, so when that was done. That's how we ended up with what was there, so the money, the grant that came for that. And we had also had many a conversation, should it be a floating dock, should it be a stationary dock, and they advised it. The the downside, so so coming back to where we are now, we probably would need to have, the park committee would need to have another. Effort to create a walkway that goes down, that specific spot was chosen by the Department of Wildlife Resources, that this was the place to put it. And I will say the effort to connect it, to make it more accessible for people. They they used the term barrier-free as the term that's used versus ADA, which is a a much higher standard.
Sure, and I don't know, you know, what our obligation would be, but. I think that, you know, I went up there after it snowed the first time this year and went up to the lake and. I, it took me a long time to get there. It was really, I mean, that whole stairway. Path was completely covered in ice, but I I don't know that I have a s- solution for that, but I wanted to just. Mention it because, um, you know, that was kind of a bummer.
Well, there's, maybe to finish this, and I would say back to each one of you. When I went inactive in the park, I would liken to ours. Eight or nine years of kind of like getting the park to like the second quarter of a football game. There are endless projects and significant financial outlays. It would take to develop multiple things, and each one of those are valid things. At the moment. Um, I took my first walk over there in a long time, and I think it looked right, I think the park committee has it looking nice with the kiosks and. Maybe smile and see what they, how they've done it, since I've been away from it for a little bit, but that being said. There's a lot that we could do as a town. The nicest thing about that park is we own the land, so it. It's a lot easier to do that versus a lot of other things we might want to do.
I think it's time we start talking about easements with people in the town. You know, there's a, there are a lot of ideas that we have about ways to go up to. We need to start asking people.
Well, it, I'll just, I'll follow up. So the email that I sent. Lincoln, what is it, one forty, what's the, what's the property number I sent you?
Let me look that up right now.
So, so with that in mind, Molly, so I actually want an answer to Lincoln, when he asked me, I said, we should look specifically at it, so I. Mentioned the property in the email to him, so it's the, it's the property that's owned by the phone company. And the suggestion would be that could be one of the pieces. So the phone company.
Central link?
The the phone company, what's, what's the, the property number is one? Was it one four, I can't.
Yes, one thirty dash. Eight one dash forty-two.
Look on there for the owner, it's it's AT&T or who's the owner?
No, it's it's central, right? Are you talking about up on hardware?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so.
Across from me.
Well, so if, so for example, possibly, maybe they would give us an easement that we could. We, so I started there thinking they they might be. It's to them, they just have a building, so you then see, can you get an easement on the next property?
Yeah, yeah.
Start with one.
No, I get that, but nobody's been, like, that's not a project that we're working on.
I just sent it to him.
I think it's mentioned a couple of times in the company.
But yes, you're correct, we need to, we need to put some stain on it.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna know, and we're not gonna get anywhere if we don't. Ask these people if there is a possibility.
That's right.
For something that would really benefit them and the town. So.
That's right, that's.
Um, but just kind of getting those kinds of agreements together or, you know, soft approvals or whatever. So that we can map out. You know, like James River Road.
Have you, you could forward that email if you want to, I just, was an email I sent to those in response, it's helpful, it just.
Well, I didn't know you guys were talking about that.
No, it just happened, well, he had, it was just. Literally, I just emailed him about that particular piece, but your point is a good one.
And Lincoln, is that helpful for you, for that conversation?
Yes, it is, um, very helpful. So I didn't have a chance to look up the actual lot right now, but I'm looking right now, the, uh, Alborah County GIS.
I think I left a phone.
The 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 reason for that particular thing is, it's really like three different ways you can go in terms of a trail. That if we don't do the sidewalk, that we, and the sidewalk would be. Really difficult to do. I mean, one of them was that, basically, you're going an easement on the right side of twenty, or an easement on the left side of twenty. Or an easement that goes into kind of the bamboo forest on the other way. I mean, those are three. Ways, if if you had, if you had a way to.
We were talking about access to.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, no, we were talking.
We were.
Okay.
Off track.
All right, let's get back on track. Sue, wrangle everybody, okay?
Just to add, I I found the lot, I'll just briefly show that if that's okay. So I'll just highlight it with my my pen here. One thirty-eight, one dash forty-two. Does that look right, Dan?
That's it.
Okay, right along Valley Street here.
Yeah, that's central link.
That's not. That's.
This is related.
That's Valley Street?
No, that's hardware on the right. He's on Valley Street there.
And there's, there's hardware right there, so.
Yeah.
So it's, it actually has two frontages, but it, of course, is higher on Hardware Street, yeah, this way. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Dan, um, so. Uh, for this specific item, uh, should I look at how we can. Briefly mention this in the comp plan as as a potential area to do more research in the future?
Well, I think that's principle one, goal three, is talking about. Pedestrian connections, so I don't know how much you've already spelled that out. I think we got a little off track, because you were talking about the river, and then we were talking about in general connectivity and pathways and stuff. Um, and understanding the history and why we. Double down on the lake, because the river was a little more difficult to access. But if you, do you have enough information or content from us on river access and ideas on that?
Well, I think all of these, these, um, these ideas, whether they're present or former, um. Ideas, they're all great, and I think the the comp plan should capture them in one way or another, just so we, we're not recreating the wheel. Or, uh, residents are not doing this in five years again, so they can at least refer to to this document as a repository of information. So I really thank Dan for for this insight. I did not, I was not completely aware of this, but, um. So I will just write that one in for, uh, uptown downtown connections. Um, in terms of downtown river connections, yes, we we already have noted down. Uh, the connection from the Route twenty bridge to the levee. And then I I specifically wanted to get also feedback on this, um, Ferry Street connection, so. Uh, either the Route twenty or Ferry Street connection, I appreciate having everyone's views, so if anyone else has insights on this. Uh, please speak up now.
You know, uh, it's possible since the river, um, the river and rafting company has just changed hands, it's possible that. They might be someone looking to partner with us on how to beautify that area. I don't know if that belongs to the comp plan, but it's just, you know, to your point, it could use some work, and there may be an opportunity for a new partnership there. And also, what about the idea of. Building a staircase that goes from the bridge to the other side of the railroad tracks? I mean, is that feasible? I know that would be a big undertaking, but the the bridge is already there.
Kind of like a, yeah, drop down on the other side. Could you like a wooden? Kind of like how it was over at Cars Mountain, the walkway, they do the wooden.
Little boardwalk thing. Yeah, well, there's no, there's no mountain to build it off of, no land to build it off of, you'd have to go in.
I use your brother box.
Yeah, oh, on the bridge, like.
Yeah, drop off, I mean, probably won't do it far.
It has to be put far enough away from the railroad.
I recall, I would say in the conversation we had with B-Dog, the, one of the things they wanted to do is. Again, I I don't, I I think this would still be true, that they wanted it in a sense not to be structurally adjusting the bridge, so. So the the stair would be in stance off the bridge.
Not even just to put a door there, like, just a little.
I I I don't know, but I I know when we were talking about what we were thinking over there, and it was. Something they would do that was off the bridge.
Yeah.
And there's no way to get access on the other side of the river? Like, if we, if we cross the bridge.
On Huggan?
Yeah.
We could talk to, you talk to landowners.
Yeah.
I didn't learn until today in that email that. I had heard we had tried to and thought about upriver, maybe a parcel in Alborah, but I didn't know we had also thought about. Buckingham and just kind of extending over the river until today.
Yeah, because that would be less, there's no, we wouldn't have the railroad barrier on that side.
No.
Something more doable.
So this photograph I I took during our, um, Boys and Girls Club, uh, tour. Um, this is basically the path, as I understand it, from Route twenty to the levee. What I just drew is this approximately, what would be the path?
It would be, yes, it would be on the other side, that that's correct.
Okay.
It would go under the bridge, and the reason it would be on the other side is that's where the sidewalk is. But but a great value of it is in a high water, it's also safety for the people who are manning the pump house. Like, they also really like the idea, but for a private safety measure.
Yep, okay, um, I think this is. Great point, I have heard that before, but I, it's not captured in the text, so I think pump house. Safety, um, that's a great point. Um, further to the idea of having a a staircase off the bridge, uh. On the other side of the CSX tracks. Yeah, I I would assume that it has to be structurally independent of the bridge itself. So that'd be quite a large staircase structure, and it would also have to withstand tremendous flooding force. Um, so that would be quite the undertaking, um, I would assume, but it is another potential, yeah.
Is that area cleared right next to the, or still cleared?
It's just a bunch, it's shrubbery inside, I mean, not shrub, but random, small trees and stuff, it's it's really not much over there.
Okay, so you can, you know, wear a trail through there, is that right?
It's it's steep, I don't know that you, it's it's not inviting, you you might be able to, but that's an interesting thought of. Of getting through there, maybe almost a less invasive way.
Right, so there could be, you know, some assistance down to that area, but at least a cut through would be nice.
Going out over the levy wall?
No, no, it would come, it would just, he's just talking about off the bridge, down to the levy.
I I've always, you know, walked past it and thought that would be, you know, a nice place to.
Absolutely.
Because that's the end of the bridge. Anyway.
Well, we have the UVA, um. I don't know if it was economic development, but there was some group that did a survey. I don't know, twenty eighteen or seventeen or so, and talked about river access. Do they make suggestions at that point in time on how to make that happen? Dan?
Then, that, I mean, what we had was. At least what I was referring to were. Less realistic than what we're talking about. I mean, they were nice, it was good that they dreamed.
Okay.
But some of those ideas.
Well, it might be worth, as you said, Lincoln, just mentioning that in the comp plan to say that there's already been some research and, you know. Feasibility is difficult, but it's worth continuing to look at.
Yeah, so I just pulled up one of Jack's, uh, recent aerial photographs. Thanks so much, Jack, um. And I just highlighted in pink, you know, this would be, I guess, the location of the staircase. On the far side of the bridge. If that's what I understand, right next to the the Mint Creek out output or something. No. Is that what I, has I, have I marked this approximately where staircase would?
I I think, I think you have more of the bungee jumping area.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna suggest, zip line.
You wanna, you wanna head north on twenty, right?
Yeah.
Uh, you wanna the other side of the river?
See the level, right, except along the Oscar River?
It'd be great. I still think we should have Ferris wheel.
It would just be, I mean, in terms of the stairway coming down, it would just be right next to where it's it's much closer to Tavern on the James.
Right there, where you have your.
Yeah.
Yeah, like right there, that's right. It would just come down right where people go, the bridge, you know, that little area, it's just, just right, it's right.
Oh, that's a good idea. I was thinking. Oh, that's a good idea, I was thinking the other side of the bridge. But yes, that area.
Yeah, so this would be just the connection from the sidewalk of the bridge to the levee, right, right?
Yeah, and again, that's a, it would, it may seem small, but that's very significant, because it it takes everybody, it funnels everybody from downtown. Anyways, that's it.
Yeah, and it is a long way to kind of walk around too, so, I mean, it it was kind of the way it is.
Absolutely.
So so there's, there's no previous study or talk about doing a staircase uh, on the other side of railroad tracks from the bridge? That's never been discussed, it was quite far vertically.
Stairways, no, but not to my knowledge.
We talked about a hang gliding spot there too, but that we decided.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Zip line and bungees are still on the table.
I love that.
Would the town submit the insurance for me to start the business?
How many businesses are you running right?
Yeah, really.
Right now, it's.
And do you have a business plus? Don't answer that question.
Okay, um, so, um, if if you don't mind, I'll keep, keep rolling.
Hold on a second.
Hold on just a second.
Yeah, I, so I visited this town in, um, it's called, it's Lock Haven, Pennsylvania, over the summer. And there, I just looked up their population, there, it's about eighty four hundred, but it's a small town in Pennsylvania, they're right on the Susquehanna River. Um, they have this beautiful bridge that crosses the river. And they have a levee on the other side protecting the town, and there's. Like, wow, it's all the bigger.
Yeah.
And they have a paved trail system that runs all for like miles along the river, and it's all lit, and it's beautiful. Um, obviously, we couldn't do something like that, but maybe we could contact somebody in in their offices and just get some ideas for how would they get, did they own that property along the river, how did they get the rights to that? If they didn't, um, just some ideas for how they got the funding for that, because I can't imagine that a town of eighty four hundred people would be able to afford something like that.
Yeah.
Sometimes the, some of those things, both the High Line and the Belt Line are the High Lines in New York City, that, like, if the rail went under, but there, like, there's, there's very significant trails that develop when a rail, rail goes down.
Yeah.
So that kind of thing.
What else are you going to do?
Well, it's, that's actually, anyway.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a rails to trails type of thing, but it's, um, it's gorgeous, and it really, it it's quite stunning.
I just keep thinking, there are a lot of, there are a lot of Virginia landowners, I bet they have some money, you know?
Is that it?
Yes.
I found that and linked it to, to Lincoln.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's.
Oh, yeah, good ideas.
Actually, looks a lot like Scottsville from this angle.
I stayed in this little lockhouse across the river, and I walked the whole way from the lockhouse across that bridge. And then went up and down the trail system there along the river on the other side, it's and then it would, you know, it was accessed right into town, you can walk down to the main street too, and it was really nice.
That is really nice.
Yeah.
Lock Haven, Pennsylvania.
Yep.
Awesome.
Very cool.
Yeah. All right, Lincoln, at the table.
Okay. Um, let me just write down a lock cave it. So, um, another thing Molly and I were discussing was, um, photographs to augment the comp plan, how we can, uh, potentially replace some of the older photographs that have been in the document for several rounds and add new photographs. So I emailed Jack, um, thanks so much, Jack, for sending some of these aerials. These are hot off the press, right, just a day or two ago, right? Yeah.
You, you said, okay, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Lincoln.
But, uh, but but what I like about these, Jack, are they, the the trees don't have any leaves, so you can see more of the buildings, um.
Yeah.
As opposed to, um, this one's a nice one too, I really liked the Benham James, um.
First one.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you there.
One, uh, next one, I think, is the, um, is the, um, furthest one towards two line from staying down here, that one.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
This one's, this one's a good one, because you can see a lot of the the town leading to downtown to the midtown, I guess we'd call it, and there's the shopping center. And then this is kind of what got Molly and I talking about aerial photographs, uh, this is, I I guess, from the police drone during the Fourth of July. And what's great, you can see the river, but you can also see the parade happening, uh, so there's a lot to see in this photograph, um. So this, this is a great photograph, maybe even to go on the cover of the comp plan or somewhere else important to really explain the town.
Yeah.
So I think we're getting close on that, and Molly has a lot of her, um, photographs from, uh, different events around town. Including Fourth of July, so I think that really helps to illustrate a lot of things we're talking about. So we're gonna be adding those into the the document, yeah. Um, so, so that's all I have there, um. Since I've been traveling, I haven't had a time to go through a hundred percent of the comments you you sent, Ms. Strassner, but thank you so much for all the edits on on that text that you sent, appreciate that. And I know, Lisa, you sent me some texts too, I haven't quite had a chance to look through either, I know Molly, you're working on a little text too for um, infrastructure, uh, build out infrastructure on the weaving approach.
I'm hoping to get Dan's input on that, he's got some great ideas about infrastructure, and we'll just make sure that that's all kind of included in in what we draft.
Yep. So, um, let me just show the the weaving approach diagram, um. I've got few screens open here, let me just, uh, go to that, okay, I've got that ready, let me share my screen now. Okay. So, um, this is the the weaving diagram, um. So, um, basically, one thing that that Molly and I were were talking about, Molly was, uh, you know, asking about, you know, different ways of, um, thinking about the tire factory, so I don't know, Molly, if you wanna me- mention anything about that.
About the tire factory? I think we talked about this, you know, we've talked about this in different phases, but I think that it's really important that we do drill in on what we want, uh, what is it that we want, you know? And, um, I think that is gonna be hard with this group, because we're kind of divided on it, but um, I think that that's really important to come up with a plan for it and maybe suggestions or examples or whatever to kind of illustrate what we want, um, for the tire factory, you know, I don't know if that has been spelled out in the old comp plan. Can't remember.
That was the, the east, the west downtown, small area.
Area plan.
Which, you know, may or may not be relevant any longer in post-COVID times, but, but I think we can absolutely still mention within I mean, there's plenty of room within here to talk about a big picture for town, maybe not specifically the tire factory, but what else do we need, and?
I think there needs to be more specifics on the tire factory, I think that, yes, there are differing views on it. But I think it's important to kind of nail down what we would want there, so that people will know. You know, and if we can't come to a decision about that, then it can be as specific as it can be, and go from there, I just think it's important.
West downtown small area plan say specifically about that space, I can't remember, at this point, it's been.
And so that, that was when we initially discussed the mixed use.
Yeah.
So a lot of the document is gonna refer to both residential and commercial usage for both the building, um, and then residential surroundings, um.
I mean, we did kind of talk about how, um, it wasn't necessarily shops that we were looking for as far as mixed use there, um, or, I don't know, maybe that was the the thought with mixed use that we, um, we would want medical facilities or something to help with daycare, movies, or senior services and things like that, and in that area, it's somewhat close to the old high school and you know, maybe accessible, I think it's gonna become an issue that we don't have medical services here in Jacksonville. With an increase of population, I just really think that there's bound to be someone who comes to town and wants to do that kind of thing, I just want to make sure that we are and maybe this isn't what we want, but I I think that the the people I've talked to have responded about you know, a locked facility that has no access to the town, and that that's not really something that encompasses the town, or gives a service, or a benefit to the town besides housing.
So the the West Downtown Small Area Plan is forty four pages. And a lot went into that, so I would suggest if you think that there's anything that is relevant to say, like, yeah, this is, let's highlight this and underscore it, then maybe throw that into the comp plan. Just, you know, to like, give it extra weight or or refer to this document, and I'm sure it's in the bibliography, right? Lincoln, okay, um, but we, you know, it it was forty four pages worth of work and months of work that went into it, so we can't I mean, I don't want to undermine it by saying something contrary, but I think if there's something in here that you think is really relevant and useful and and we want to reinforce, then we should we could reinforce that in the comp plan.
Are we, I mean, did you find that there was talk about mixed use, or are you saying there isn't?
Well, I definitely remember mixed use, because it came up lots, there's thirty four references to the word mixed in. Yeah, I mean, it was definitely both Josh and I, and well, even Shannon, you were on the commission when we, when we approved this. It's, it's mentioned, mixed use is mentioned eleven times in the comp plan.
So I think this is a great point, um, I have the document pulled up right now, and it it says rezone the tire factory cipher mixed use, um, so maybe we can, we can reference this document quite a lot, if if that's okay, I mean, this is already an approved document by the town council, um, I think it has a lot of good ideas.
That sounds like a good idea, I was kind of thinking of it as we would want to include that in our overall comp. Um, but if it's specifically talked about in this document, it's just, there's been some, you know, flip-flopping about that, and I wanted to feel like we were getting to what we want.
Yeah.
Um, but if that's it, then we'll do that.
I also think it would be really nice, as far as like retaining small town character, but, um, uh, creating community connections, if we had some sort of real community center or YMCA, like, some sort of gathering space where people can come and they can get services, but they can also, you know, potentially go to the gym and
Yeah.
learn how to swim, and, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
And I kept hearing rumors that a Y was coming out to that space, um, or the, the tire factory.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, I don't know.
Build a pool, they will come.
Right, and, uh, Lincoln, in the previous comp plan, it was in, it was advised and recommended that the town undertake the West Downtown Small Area Plan and create it, and now here we are, we have created it, so so it is definitely worthwhile to say, ta-da, we did this, right?
Okay, yeah, so we can, we can highlight that that was an accomplishment from the previous compliance recommendation, I think that's a great point, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think those kinds of community spaces would get people from outside our community into Scottsville.
Yeah, there are a lot of people that talk about, oh, I wanted to, you know, rent the theater, but it's kind of, you know, like, I didn't, I didn't want to get into all that, you know, just having a place where we can meet together in small groups to, you know, talk about things or learn about things, I know, um, SCAN is going to encompass that kind of thing more often, and that is fantastic, but just having a place where people could use it for, for community gatherings.
Yep.
Well, it's kind of a pipe dream at this point in time, but I think that I personally would vote for that.
Me too.
Okay, well, I think these, these conversations are all great, it's a nat- natural evolution, so we're kind of at this stage, uh, of the comp plan of kind of revisiting what we've written and then double checking if what we've written is really on on the right target. So like, for instance, the connectivity to the river, the tire factory matters, um, so I think this is, this is a great, uh, next stage for us, um. In terms of, uh, next steps, we will just keep working over the next month on these last bits of text that we need to to finish up, I think that's, that's, that would be a great accomplishment, yeah. So I'd be glad to have, uh, two more, uh, Zoom conversations with individuals or small groups, and, uh, also Mr. Eisen has offered to to meet with me, um. Um, so I think Javier messaged me about that, so got to follow up however, uh.
I think he's already making edits to it.
Yes. So I shared back in the.
Yeah, we, there's no way to tell them that's not okay.
Yeah, so I spent a lengthy time asking, hey, allow planning commission to go through the process of completing their comp plan and then providing a recommendation. But at the end of the day, if if I have one of my council members ask for a public record, even a draft.
Oh, yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
Which I don't think is productive, you know, look at a draft, especially when you are.
So is he making edits on the actual draft that?
No, I.
Lincoln's.
Pretty copy that I have on my, on my table here, but it's sitting on my desk also.
Cause does town council have to, like, deliberate on what changes he wants to make?
Well, let let me say this as a town councilor, or, I'm sorry, let me say this as a planning commissioner. As a planning commissioner, the role of town council is to wait until this document is done. Period. Base close.
Evidently not.
Well, that that is the role, the role of the planning commission is to create this document and submit it to the town council, with the town council, when it's in our hands, we can do all of what we want with it, I'm telling that.
Yeah.
But I, Javier alerted me to this today, and I find it trouble, I guess I'll say that.
I do too, and it kind of speaks loudly about their dis.
In essence, if he's making edits on a current, a current draft, he's basically the planning commissioner, as any commissioner would be making edits to a draft.
Yeah.
So he's making edits on a document that's not done, and then he's gonna go through it again?
Well, and we're all making edits at the same time, so there's nothing to say that is.
As long as, as long as his, I guess I would say, maybe to say it this way to answer your question, if whatever the planning commission does, any citizen can have input in terms of what we do.
Yeah, but they don't make edits directly without.
That's exactly right, so.
Well, and I'm curious, I appreciate you, I think you're wonderful, but why in the world? Because it was a town councillor that asked you to do that?
Yes. I could.
Did he find you in a dark alley and ask you for?
In in neither economy shop, but
Right.
Um, it's been a persistent request, and I I kind of framed what, with the process, the best way of this process going is like Dan said, it's like, you guys go through the process of.
I thought that was not the best way, the legal way to do that.
I gave him an old draft at this point, because it's changed in the last fifteen months, and he asked for it.
He's like, he's like a twelve year old.
Well, to also, to also make myself, since I'll make my own town council, people unhappy there, may as well make the planning commission unhappy with me here. There's a fair amount of, well, my, I'm just trying to be fair to the process, so the people on the council would say they, some of them are frustrated that it's taken so long, they want it to be done, you know.
And so they went around us, I think that that's really disrespectful, I would love to make that part of the record. And so they went around us. I think that that's really disrespectful. I would love to make that part of the record, you know.
Um, just to to mention, I I'm glad to meet with whoever, um, and I I, whoever I meet with, I learn a little bit, um. So uh, if meeting with Mister Heisen, I can learn a little bit and improve the com plan uh, through the details and so that I'd be glad to.
Now facilitate his changes, okay.
I can't like, I, I'm upset about the fact that we had a twenty-minute conversation in that meeting. About how to proceed. And then I spent an hour drafting an email to town council. And I did not hear from anyone, not a soul about it. Except for a commissioner checked in with me and said, did you hear anything? And I was like, no, I haven't. I am frustrated. We're volunteers, we're working our butts off. We had to discuss amongst ourselves about how to proceed. And then. We decided how to proceed. I wasn't in favor of it. I thought it was okay to share with them. I didn't want him to have edit access. But. I said, I spent time putting an email together and no one responded. Like the email said, stay tuned, we'll share a document with you. They could have said, actually, that's not okay. We really want access now, or they could have said, thanks for putting this together, but we really need more, nothing. Like, come on.
Yeah.
Like, what are we doing here? We're stepping on each other's toes and wasting time. Like, my time is valuable. I don't wanna have to spend time drafting emails that people don't read. I mean, like, over and over and over again. It's not just this instance. I'm like exhausted.
I think it's important to make a point of this. I mean, as much as, you know. He decided to go around and get you to facilitate this for him. I'm kinda mad about that, Javier.
Well, and he's totally wasting his time. Like, it's completely pointless because what he's doing is not, it's not permanent. It's just one more edit in a document. That all of us are editing. We can go take his edit out right now. I don't even know what he did, but who knows?
So that online document, only people have touched it, me and Lincoln, is we just transferred over.
Okay, you gave him an old.
Well, and.
And then over the last month, I think the com plan has changed dramatically, just from the work that planning commissioners have done and then. Small copy edits here and there, like, it's a different document already in fifty days.
Well, and he, he argued to get access to the website. So he has access to go on to the town website and make changes.
Well, and and that was granted to many of us. Whoever wanted it, pretty much Arlene said, I Eileen said we could have it, but. And it could be helpful.
I think that's kind of, it's.
I mean, there should be limits, like you shouldn't.
Or um, some sort of approval process on that, but.
Who who's paying attention to to that? Like, who would be the approval? Anyway, I'm just, I'm just. Beating a dead horse, um.
And to your point, it's kind of counterproductive because in the last month and a half, the com plan has changed a lot during the last.
Yeah.
Unless, I mean, you you did point out that maybe there was some statistics or facts or something that that he could have updated and. Given us information on, maybe we had gotten it wrong. Awesome.
Yeah, but how do we know that? That's the hard thing.
He wrote it down on paper.
So much stuff to focus on. Why, why is, why are they so bent around the axle about getting access to the com plan?
They think there's a com plan.
If you, if you have seen the process done before and you know how long it takes.
Um, taking longer, but we're doing more thorough job.
And I will, I will say to be specific, it's, it's a minority in the council that are. Uh, minority, meaning smaller number.
Yeah.
Um, there's two new people that know nothing, so to speak. I mean, in other words, they're not involved in it.
Yeah.
And and I'll, and then there's.
Focus, stay in your lane.
The one point I would argue you with on, you know, him being able to access in the. Reason for providing statistics or facts is we have empty chairs and a empty lobby for online visitors. If you have something to add to say, hey, these are some points that you should add. We have a open comment section in our meeting.
Right.
And you can attend and you can give your feedback, but to be doing this on the backside. When there is not an official document in your hands is an apartment.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I I've come to town council as a citizen several times. And that is the proper way to, you know, it's not my responsibility as a. Counselor to tell the town council directly that this is what I want. You go, you sit in the chair, and then when it's time, you go up and you tell them what you're thinking and what you want. I mean, they don't pay much attention to that either, but.
And Lincoln, to Molly's point, you don't have the capacity to sit down and talk to every citizen who wants to have a conversation with you about the com plan. Why does one town counselor get preferred status and access to you than than anyone else?
Yeah, I I just received some, some emails about it, so I uh, I just uh, followed directions in my situation.
That might be more seeking correction than than like. Um, just cause it's, it's a council member.
I think there's, I think there's, there's an avenue going on here.
Yeah, there's an avenue to to share.
Yes, there is an avenue to share. And we are so open to people coming in here and talking to us and telling us what they think.
Right.
I think it's a great exchange, but and I get that people have their lives and they don't really know what's going on. Um, you know, maybe that's another push uh, that we need to do. But anyway, I'm just pleased.
Thank you. I am, I am as well. So I guess my, my, um. Request would be for Dan as the liaison to take back to town council that we. Would ask that they respect the work that we're doing here and allow us to do our jobs. And if they wanna provide feedback, there's an avenue to provide feedback, and that's either through you as the liaison, or they can come before us at a meeting. Or they can email us as a commission and we can, we can discuss it in our meeting. Um, but they, there's no reason to edit a document that's a work in progress and and it's. And it's a certain amount of privilege that they don't have. It's not their document yet.
I think there's a lot of that going on, like, well, I'm a town counselor and I don't care what they say.
Yeah, there's gotta be, you know, and it's it's undermining to us and our work. And and I did give them an opportunity to discuss that with me in October when I sent them that email. And they didn't, so there's avenues to go through.
Uh, thank you, Alfred. Uh, I, I, I very much hear the message.
And and also please relay that we are also volunteers who can get burned out and and. Don't appreciate having our work undermined and maybe, maybe couch that a little better, but.
Very much, I I have been made to feel by this, uh, you know, you know, this, this council. That we are a recommending body and that I I don't feel like they take us. Very seriously in our recommendations and it feels very pointless.
There hasn't been any evidence of of support.
Right.
Or, you know, gratitude.
This just underlines the whole, like, my sentiment about, like. More, right, like, do you, if you, if they wanna write the document, they can. Luckily, I don't, you know.
We're spending two hours of our personal time when we can be enjoying time with our families.
That's true. Maybe we should get.
And 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 Lincoln is a volunteer, correct? So I mean, if it's.
Yes, the last year I've been a volunteer.
And and then he would.
That's all, we'll step up.
I mean.
I I think I would just encourage everybody to be careful of your concern. That for a particular person or two versus a group.
I, but yeah, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking specifically about one person or I I. I kind of felt this way about.
I think it would be the opposite, where it's, uh, it, the ire is more. Because of one or two specific holdouts rather than the full.
Like, there have been some interesting decisions going on in town.
And and Javier, I would ask that if you, if somebody asks you to do something that you know that we're not gonna be okay with. Ask them to hold off and you bring it to us to discuss it. And say it's only fair because if we as a commission made a decision and debated on something and. Gave you marching orders too. I mean, we have some authority to make decisions, right? So it's not fair for them to put you in a position. And and I don't think you should feel like you're in a position to do something that you don't think is the right thing to do.
Or maybe, but it was the right.
Public, yes, I mean, it's, it's a one drive, it's a public document, since we're working on it as elected officials and staff members.
Is that a rationalization or is that like, really?
But like, it's never been, my email drafts are never contentious. They just kinda sit there until they become emails. I'll put it that way.
Okay.
Um, it's just the.
Yeah, of course. And I would never suggest that. I just think that the action of doing what. Was discussed so heavily between us, um, you know, there was all this talk about, oh, we wanna make sure that. There's respect there, you know, and evidently the mayor at some point in time said, y'all be cool. But I have no idea that he said anything or if it was even acknowledged.
No, he, no, he very much said something.
Okay, well.
He, 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 he strongly represented the, the concerns from here.
There's the professional decorum to these processes and appointee process.
I don't think he got the message is kind of what I'm saying. Because, you know, disrespect on top of disrespect, it's just, it's, yeah, it's disappointing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I could, I I can't be in your shoes because I would not do well.
Oh, I know.
You, you have to, you have to.
You know I respect.
Be diplomatic and 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 rightfully so, cause everyone deserves respect and deserves to be treated fairly and. And be be heard, but.
I think that's what is really what people think in the town council, but they're using their privilege. I I really honestly think that that's kind of the spirit that it came from. I I'm a town council, you know, I'm okay.
Okay, what else do we need to discuss? Lincoln, how we doing?
Uh, well, I would like to have uh, basically two. Uh, small discussions on the text with any folks that are willing. Uh, kind of like what Molly and I I did, uh, just to bring uh, the two remaining sections, um. To a close if possible.
Discussion or is it something that you need from us in writing?
Well, the first, before the discussion, I I'll read through the text that you sent me, then maybe we can meet and discuss it if that's possible. So. Perhaps in about two weeks, uh, maybe we can, uh, we can uh, schedule that offline, so I'll send you. Lisa, an email and also Molly, an email separately and we can pick a. A calendar date for that, yeah.
But I think Lincoln's talking about how we wrapped up last month. For like a better term, if you're going left or right, if this makes sense for you guys, column three and four. And then I believe Lisa, you have some final pieces you want to add to, and I'm gonna assume if you want some. Uh, feedback from your planning commissioners on on that. That could be done. In some degree offline through coordinating, maybe just bouncing it off of one of the planning commissioners. And then the last piece is part one, or the first column, the furthest column left, which.
That's my column and I'm working on that.
The build-out infrastructure column.
And I, I, I think that's what you're talking about, right, Lincoln?
Yeah, I think, um, Molly, if you can weave in some of the, um, points from the Small Area Plan. West Downtown Small Area Plan. I think, um, that would be great because it's already an approved document.
Yeah, I I planned on putting it in that section, uh, when it was talked about, so yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah. Um, so the only uh, other point I'll, I'll mention, uh. I'm sorry, there's a huge crowd in the lobby kind of next to where I am, but, um. What I I have noticed is that this, uh, one area that we were. Uh, talking in the growth, uh, column. I'll just share my screen really fast. One second here. This, this item here that I have circled was a little bit repetitive. Uh, this, this item, it talked about safety here and we also already had safety here. Um, so. Um, I think the original intention of this, this bullet point that I have circled was to create a. A potential list of infrastructure that companies or partners could proffer from. That was the original intention because, um, it's more like a menu of the needs for the community, basically, yeah. So that's why I suggest we delete the safety priorities, cause it's already on the bullet point above, yeah. If that's okay.
Yes.
And and we could bring in a little bit more language about things like the tire factory, the west, west small area plan, for instance, um. Here, that's what I would suggest. Some of those ideas about mixed use, so on and so forth. Okay, if that sounds good, I can, I can draft a proposal and email you. Okay, thank you so much, yeah.
Thanks, Lincoln, so much. Lincoln and Diego.
Yes, headed to a banquet now and presenting tomorrow. I don't know that it's the Hyatt, I think it's next to Sea World, but I'm not gonna be going to Sea World. Okay, see you.
Bye.
Bye, Lincoln.
Bye, Lincoln.
He's so good.
Yeah, he is.
He's a good guy.
Very good to us. Yeah, oh my goodness. I mean, I know it's a good experience for him too and his career.
I know, yeah.
Been so much of his time, yeah.
I like, think he loves it.
I updated the document also with some financial information just to plan from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, which is. I think a good point, since I'm still waiting on our audits for last year. Uh, but just to give a little bit of context, so at least at some point in the document says, hey, this is what our budget looks like. It's one of the old requests. And then, um, I, you'll probably go into appendix, I summarize. Giving a little bit of context, that survey we did at the beginning of the process. So we shared out those tables and the graphs, but just put a little bit of text that's probably useful. In the appendix and ended up trying to keep it short, the one of the five pages, I was dropping graphs in. Uh, but that's probably the best way of pulling away at that. Uh, I looked over the old slides and and you need some context, uh, we talked through them when, when we presented them to you guys. So that'll go in the back to the, like you said, we're not losing things uh, in the process. And then Jack helped me out and. Uh, he were patient with me to get some of those drone photos, so just. Won't write on them.
Yeah, that should be a trademark now, um. I also won the photos for phone book last, when he was here, so it's like copyright everything now. So make sure that you guys don't write on my photos or maps, that'd be wonderful.
Don't write on them?
Don't like put any.
So that they appear.
They appear like.
Okay. So no arrows.
That'd be wonderful.
But I think we could do it on an aerial photo like that if it's for context as a.
Yeah, cause it's not permanent, it goes away. Uh, and and we would always use a copy of the photo, it would never be, you know, your original. You know, Jack Maxwell. Okay, I got you. I'm, I'm really honestly, um, I respect that. And I understand all of that, so I will do as you ask. And not put anything on the picture, but.
And then I think the last part, Lincoln popped off, but we have a whole bunch of notes from talking about future use. Of related to future use map, so I'll probably work with Jack on that. Uh, it might be a topic for next month, when we look back together.
Yeah, I was wondering about that one. I kept saying, is that the future use? No.
No.
So the next step is to, um, link it all put together, um. Some of the information on this, uh, weaving controls and send that out for reaction. And then we'll have a follow-up discussion, that's gonna drop off.
Um, I feel like we have half of it done, just three and four. And then it would just do, it would do that, well, sorry, we have half of it done, half of it needs to get done. At some point, you would just wanna have it all together and react to it, um, even though you're reacting to it.
Well, right, sorry, but he, he did share with us.
No, no, no.
Time, right?
Yeah, three, half of it, we're looking for input.
Three and four need. Three and four, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering, cuz he said he wanted to have two discussions.
So he could say, hey, what about this, or this doesn't read well, or whatever he wants.
He certainly also had some other stuff he wanted to share with us to get feedback on.
Right, I just wanted to know where we left off. Are we meeting with him over the next month? Or did, was he gonna put together an email and send it out for us to look at first?
Yeah, he was gonna.
And then have a follow up.
Offline, they're probably gonna have to do two things, one's probably gonna be more like helping with their dinner. And then coming back. Um, just knowing there's workflow.
Okay, and does he need any any more edits or anything red or do you know?
I think with the ones we shared last month, yeah, two weeks ago, um. You should be good. At least that's the indication we got from the meeting.
Okay.
And then it'd be much more hands off on the first two columns. Trying to get something together on and then making sure that we're satisfied with. With the work of finalizing lease on that second column, uh, cuz we didn't have that last one. We all feel good as planning commissioners on it, I would say, uh, especially cuz he got input during the meeting that you found, I think, uh, constructive. I would just wait for anything else and then just be knocking out pieces of it.
Lisa, is it okay if I make a motion about this discussion about. The comp plan being edited before, you know, that I make a motion to um. Have this as part of the follow up on the the agenda. Because if we just talk about it, it doesn't happen, but if we make a motion, then they'll put it on. So that we have a line item for following up.
A motion for, for town council?
Uh, for, I guess for Dan to, you know, assure us that he talked to people, I don't know. Um, but if that's, if you don't see the need for that.
I think we can just, I don't, yeah, I don't know that we need to make a motion to have it added to the agenda. Yeah, can you remember to report back and can we remember?
Yeah, it's just we we glide over it. Almost every single time, I was going through.
There are levels you could do. I mean, you could, I mean, I feel. I feel fairly fairly clear as to explain what you how you all feel, but you could, you could. Have a vote of this approval or you could have a vote of lots of things.
Really great things. We were all going to be, you know, having pictures and information about people who. Own the place and possibly putting together a database for, you know, what is. Going on with each of the places in town, just having more information consolidated and things like that. We never talked about it again.
I I.
I went and took pictures, but um, I'm I'm hoping to put that information together and maybe bring it up. Another time, but it just goes into the ether. I just thought I'd check.
I I I understand what you're saying and I agree. I think there's lots of times where we say we we wanna see something or do something or follow up on something.
Shannon had had said, you know, all right, let's do this and this is what we need to do and then we never. We lose our momentum when that happens, so if you can remember your duties, that would be awesome.
What am I supposed to remember?
To talk to the town council about, about editing the document, even though it's not done. Okay.
He was.
Like, I think it's on all of us to also remember to to revisit that stuff in our next meetings or. Yeah, like, can you keep a list of what we want on the next month's agenda?
Yeah, the easiest thing I've probably to try to do this with town council is like continuing business. So at then the meeting or through the meeting, say, hey, can you include this as a legitimate item for continuing business? Just the, the the more straightforward, the easier.
Right.
Cuz now you're kind of reading the tea leaves, so like.
Okay. So continuing business to to understand. Well, to make sure the town council understands that we're working on the document and it'll be done as soon as possible. And we'll get it to them when we can.
And which also, that, one of earth. There is so much stuff to be worried about on this planet. The fact that the comp plan is taking a little bit extra time because we are trying to do the most thorough and professional.
And because we're on a shoestring budget.
I just cannot imagine why it would be, that would be like one of us asking for the budget in advance. More important things to do with my time than worry about stuff that isn't in.
Yeah.
Hasn't been approved yet or or finalized, like. Figure out something else to do with your time.
Well, so.
Thank you. Let's get it, bro.
Well, this is awesome. We do agree about this, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I I.
I'm sorry, I think I, I think I know where you went. So Lincoln needs to look over the material that you shared also.
Well, no, I was just because he had said that he wanted to, I I just wanted to know for the, if he was requesting something.
And then it'd be, it'd be either follow up on once he's able to look over what that is he gave and then just. The portions of the weaving approach that we need to flesh out in text. So he would just kind of coordinate with you guys on on wrapping up that piece. That's what he's.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Javier. At the cellar, yes, it does.
And um, I wanted to share some news if we're done with everything else. Um, I will be resigning from planning commission. Um, I'm gonna be moving out of town, which will make me ineligible to serve, um. And I'll I'll definitely be here for the next meeting, but hopefully maybe April, if we could find a replacement, that would be great. So can you start the process of looking for somebody, please? And talk to Nancy Gill, I know she's already got some ideas cuz. She's been.
I know.
Ever since I mentioned that I'm moving, she's like.
Somebody gave her some steroids or something.
There's a procedure now that we. You can get him the docs, ever heard of that?
So I'll I'll send you a quick, just if you could put it in.
I will put it in writing, yes.
And just give an effective date.
Yes.
It would save with some confusion and.
That's the policy.
I mean, it was just.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it's on the record that hopefully next month, we'll have candidates to review. And remember, we have the whole application process so we can get qualified candidates. See what their strengths are and what their skills are and. Yeah, Jack.
He can't, he doesn't like it.
Oh, I would love to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I would love to second that. I was gonna say second that emotion. And the motion, all right, all in favor? Right, motion passes, thank you.